Okay, welcome to the April 26th Board of Select and Sewer Commissioners meeting. All members are present with the exception of Ms. Bonson. Our first item on the agenda is review warrant for town meeting. Anita?
So I would ask the board to vote to close the warrant so that it dictates that the slate of articles that you have before you tonight is the slate that we'll be reviewing and presenting.
Make a motion to close the warrant.
Have a motion and a second to close the warrant for town meeting and the other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? Okay.
Okay. I'll go through each article, then you can vote to as to whether or not you want to include this article in the warrant. And we will also assign who would like to be...
We'll do that after we go through them.
Okay. All right, starting with Article One, we have some standard articles. Article One is the authorization to hear reports of officers and committees of the town.
Make a motion to include that.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Two is authorization to borrow in anticipation of revenue and to enter into compensating balance agreements with a bank.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Three, another standard article, authorization to spend funds in anticipation of reimbursement of state highway assistance aid.
So move. Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Four is the article associated with the debt excluded borrowing for the proposed senior center project. This would be to vote to appropriate a sum of money to cover the cost of engineering and design of the new senior center facility through the bidding, as well as project management costs, a portion of construction costs, including all costs incidental and related thereto, and that this would be subject to contingent upon approval of the voters of a ballot question to exclude the amounts required to pay for the bonds or notes from the provisions of two and a half.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Five is authorization to amend the personnel bylaw for the FY17 wage schedule, and this is done to reflect a reclassification of the cemetery superintendent position to a non-exempt position.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Six is authorization to amend the personnel bylaw and to amend the classification
compensation plan so as to provide for a 2% cost of living in FY18.
So move.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Article Seven is authorization to set the salary of elected officials.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Eight is our standard budget fix article, authorization to transfer unexpended funds from fiscal year 2017 appropriations.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Nine is authorization to appropriate from FY17 budget for FY18 retirement-related expenses.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Ten is authorization to pay bills from a previous fiscal year.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Do we have any at this time?
We have one bill so far.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Eleven is authorization to appropriate money to the sewer enterprise account for fiscal year 2018 with a total budget appropriation of $1,739,561.
So move.
I do have a motion, a second. Last year, you know, in the town, two town meetings, you know, people were asking about the receipts, on the sewer receipts. Is that something?
That's sewer.
They asked whether we have all the receipts.
Oh, the billing with related to the Holden?
Yeah.
Yes, so that's, we're all caught up with that now.
So the last time, you know, we were saying about $600,000 or something.
Outstanding, you're saying outstanding?
No, 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 the receipts, all the receipts. Anyway.
The whole receipts for the year?
Yes.
Wouldn't there be?
I don't know.
Of this over?
No, it's not.
So any...
There was a question came in, the previous town meeting, and also the last town meeting. So that time, you know, they were not able to...
Well, the previous town meeting, the last town meeting, the finance committee said that they could not opine on the sewer budget because they didn't have enough information. My assumption is that's been rectified.
They perceived everything, and they reviewed it several times.
So, and a resident stood up and said, "Two town meetings in a row, our finance committee, who is our oversight to make sure we're doing things right, is being told that they can't render an opinion." And that shouldn't have...
Yeah, maybe that's the thing, you know.
That's, if they, last two town meetings, that's what...
Last two town meetings.
That's what was raised, and that shouldn't be an issue this year.
This year, okay.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have Article Twelve, which is to establish a special revenue fund for the West Boylston Public Access TV. This is a mandated process that we have to go through.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Thirteen is the omnibus budget appropriation article for FY18.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Fourteen is to vote to appropriate funds for capital improvement purchases. The items to be recommended have not yet been voted by the capital investment board.
So move.
This is for what department?
This is for a variety of different departments.
Well, what we have that...
They are planning to meet Tuesday night.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Fifteen is to vote to extend the sunset clause on previously authorized capital appropriations, meaning the communications equipment that was approved at the May 16, 2011 town meeting, and the middle high school generator, which was approved at the May 16, 2016 town meeting.
So move.
Second.
Okay, the, well, I guess I can understand the communication. That was from 2011, that appropriation? Is the school still doing the generator?
Yes, they are, they're moving ahead with it, they just were not able to... They were trying to finalize exactly what they needed in terms of specifications, and they won't have it completed in time, so they want the ability to carry it over into the next fiscal year.
And does anybody know what, that's for the middle high school, that generator won't do the whole school, but for $42,000? Sure.
The numbers, my understanding is no longer $42,000, it's going to be more than that, they're going to fund it out of their budget. I don't know what the exact number is, but it's going to be substantially more than that, is my understanding.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Sixteen is to appropriate funds for installation of additional landfill monitoring wells.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Now, this is for the landfill, doesn't the light department do this now?
Per the lease agreement, the light department is going to be covering the cost of monitoring the existing wells that we have there. This article is to fund the installation of new additional monitoring wells, as is being mandated by DEP, so that they can monitor the concerns that we have with the 1-4 diocin that was coming up in some of the other existing monitoring wells. So this is above and beyond what was agreed to in the lease that we have with the light department.
So are we able to do what needs to be done now with all the...
Yes.
It's going to be on the outskirts of that?
Yes, yes, we had, we had the consultant that we use meet with the light department to determine what the layout was going to be, and there shouldn't be any issue.
What was the cost of this, do you remember?
$30,500.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Seventeen is to appropriate funds for the elderly community services program.
So move.
Second.
Do we raise this?
This is an increase, in previous years it had been $12,000, this year they're asking that it be increased to the $15,000, and this is because the municipal modernization bill has increased the cap as to the maximum a person can earn in this program from $1,200 to $1,500.
And I thought we went to $10 an hour?
Originally, they had suggested $10 an hour, but when I spoke to the COA director yesterday, she said to leave it at the $9 per hour.
So we don't even pay a minimum wage?
No, this is, this isn't...
I know that, but we don't even, we don't even...
Correct. This is the same amount that was paid last year.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Eighteen is to appropriate funds for park maintenance.
So move. Second.
And this is on and above the DPW's?
Correct.
Motion, a second, any other discussion?
When are we going to send some of the school for fertilizer to do this? Is this something?
I'm sorry, John, I didn't...
When are we going to send some of the school, be able to fertilize and do pesticides? Forget the license, I mean?
Oh, it was written into the DPW contract that there were...
Two.
There were stipends made available so that the first person who achieved the necessary license would achieve, would receive that stipend. No one has taken advantage of that yet.
So, how much is this?
We're not sure yet. Jim Padone, who's the chair of the Parks Commission, is working to try to finalize by Tuesday the value of this. Originally, he had said $10,000. I've asked him to work with the accountant to determine how much they really need based on the past few years' average.
And I think you might have talked about this, but why are we having a separate article? Why don't we just put it in the DPW under PAX? Seems kind of messy to put it in second place, another pile of money, instead of just...
Their concern there had been that the annual budget, at times, does not work well for the timing of when they need to use these funds. At the end of a fiscal year, the money disappears. If you haven't used the money by June 30th, it no longer becomes, it's no longer available, it gets turned back to the general fund, and they would have to wait till the next year's appropriation. If there is some of the money that is in an article, that article survives, so you can continue to use the money until it's depleted. So they're concerned that they want to be able to have that flexibility to carry it beyond the June 30th deadline if necessary.
It seems to, I mean, the budget set, I don't have any issue with the article, but I, we need to revisit that next year. That's, I mean, if it sunsets, they're going to get it July 1st, you know, if they have the $10,000, it's the same amount each year, I mean, it seems to me that that should absolutely, it's an operating budget, it's not an unforeseen cost. I know the police department used to have their vehicle on the capital outlay, and the capital investment board said, "This is an operating expense of the police department, they buy one a year." And that got moved into the budget. Next year, I want to look into putting that in the budget, it just makes more sense.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I mean, it just, I think it just, who controls it? Who, there's a lot of questions with this way, this way.
Well, the control is the same, it would still be under the control of the Parks Commission.
Yeah, but the DPW's portion of money is controlled by the DPW director.
It's done, the expenditures under that is done at the request of the Parks Commission. So the DPW works in collaboration with the Parks Commission to determine what's necessary to spend under that parks maintenance line item.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Nineteen is authorization to appropriate funds to the stabilization fund.
So move.
Second. Motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty, authorization to appropriate funds to the capital investment fund.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-One is appropriate funds to the unemployment trust.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-Two is transfer of cemetery funds from the sale of lot accounts to purchase necessary cemetery improvements in the amount of $3,994.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-Three is the reauthorization of existing revolving funds, and it also establishes a new revolving fund for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, for the establishment of the landfill lease revenue. And that revenue would be, any revenues received from the lease of the portion of landfill to the West Boylston Municipal Light Plant, and the revenue would be used for the specific expenditure costs in maintaining town property, including but not limited to the monitoring of the test wells and DEP mandated maintenance at the landfill.
So move.
The first payment that we got, did that just go into the general fund?
Did.
And this is what, we changed this a few years ago, right? We used to have separate articles for each of these, Nancy, is that correct? And then a few years ago, we changed it to be under one?
And it will change again because of the municipal modernization bill, and at the October town meeting, we'll be required to establish a revolving fund bylaw, which changes the process of how we deal with revolving funds each year.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Twenty-Four is authorization to appropriate the funds for the annual community preservation categories.
So move.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-Five is to vote to appropriate funds for community preservation projects, and this year, there's the one project for $17,550 for the installation of a well at Goodell Park.
So move.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none?
I do, I do. Is this wells are working?
They installed one well last year, and they ended up fracking the well, and yes, it provided...
Some water.
It provided all of the water that was used at the park, which wasn't sufficient, so they want to put a second well, in, based on the success of the first well, they're asking the CPA, and the town, through the CPC, to approve a second one.
I think the, I think the issue with this well, from when I was at the PAX Commission meeting, it's not regenerating quick enough.
Yes.
So there's water, it's just not...
Not enough water.
Right, not enough to go...
That's what I, that's what it...
So is this going to, is the plan, this is going to feed?
It'll be in a different area, but it'll feed the same system, the same, that's not the right word, the holding tank.
Yeah, right, yeah, so it's just going to help with that?
And with the well, you have no idea what, you know...
You could build two wells right next to each other, and one could have water, and one couldn't have nothing.
Right.
So, assuming it gives us the same yield, it should reduce the problem of having to monitor when, you know, "Oh, we can't water today because there's no..."
And last year was a drought too, so...
No, but it's so close to the reservoir, so maybe underneath the rocks.
But it shouldn't, they're drilling down below the bedrock, so it should, the water in the reservoir, what I've been told, I don't do this for a living, is not going to affect these wells.
These are going to be 500 feet or so.
I want to say that the application is to drill down no more than 1,000.
Yep, that'd be, wow, that's a lot.
And if we could just, I guess for a future meeting, just to ask the PAX what they feel the savings has been over the last year? I mean, if they're buying no town water, then we know what the savings is, it's easy. But I know the last one was about this price too, so it's, I know there is a savings.
It was, I think, it was either $4,000 or $4,500, it would be in the minutes of the last CPC meeting, but it was either $4,000 or $4,500 is what they would have had, based on their water usage, that's what it would have cost to get it from the town.
Right. Okay, have a motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-Six is authorization to amend the general bylaws to add a local wetlands protection bylaw. This version of the bylaw was generated by the Conservation Commission and has been reviewed and approved by the bylaws committee with one small amendment, which is included in this version in the warrant.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none?
Do you want to see any argument like last time?
We should not.
We don't know that yet.
No, it's among the committee.
We have the very...
Among the committee, bylaw committee and the conservation, you know.
Yeah, I know, but I know.
It's not the public, but...
No, the bylaw meant with the conservation, we worked out.
This time, no, okay.
Okay, have a motion, a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So next, we need to, next, we need to vote to have warrant posted?
Yes.
And a motion for that?
Make a motion to have warrant posted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess we can sign these as a conference. Okay, next item is to sign motions, if you have to, I'll do one, and then two, oh, let me just go, two will be Siobhan, three will be Pat, if anybody has any issue, or if there's any that I go to, and the planning board might be doing some, maybe, and the CPC will do some, so if you get, if you see him and I don't, just...
Okay.
So the next would be four, and that would be Mr. Hadley.
Five and six would be the chairman of the personnel board.
Is that the plan, am I going to do it?
Yeah, I just spoke to them before this meeting.
Personnel.
So that would be Larry Chisholm, would move both of those.
Yep, I'll get the salary.
Yeah, you get the salary. And then eight will be Siobhan. Nine will be...
Skip this one.
What did I do? No, nine, I'm just going to stop. Nine will be Pat, so that's Pat. And then 10 will be me. 11 will be John. 12 will be Raj. 13 will be Siobhan.
Make her read the whole thing.
Capital improvements will be Pat.
Ah, the CIP usually makes that motion.
So the...
Chris Bergland?
It'll be CIP. Okay, 15 will be, the sunset clause will be Pat. 16 will be, the well will be me. 17 will be John. The track maintenance will be Raj. And would be, 18 would be Raj. 19 will be...
Passed over?
Siobhan. Capital investment will be Pat. 21, unemployment trust will be me. 22, transfer of cemetery funds will be John. Number 23 will be Raj. 24 will be the CP...
Yeah, Steve Blake's going to do that.
CPA, he'll do both of them, me. So 24 and 25 will be CPA. 26 will be...
Or Bill Chase?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good idea, for the wetlands, he's the chairman of the conservation. We have a meeting Monday, I'll talk to him.
You have those? I'm sure Nancy does, but I don't.
Okay, so I'll be starting to draft the motions on Friday, and I'll send them out to each of you, if you, as we did last year, I'll be glad to speak to the details of each of the articles, you know, for those that we have control of, obviously not the ones that other boards or committees are doing. So if you, after the motion's been made and seconded, if you want to refer any, you know, to me, I can speak to the details and answer any questions on these. Unless there's something that you specifically want to handle yourself, let me know, but otherwise, I'll be prepared to do that for each of the articles that we have control of.
Or the person that might, there might be some person on the list that will say, "Any questions can go to this person."
Last year, I think you gave us a synopsis, like a description of the article?
Yes.
I found that helpful, if you could do that, you know, "All right, this is where we're going to move," and then in English, we can tell the people, "This is what it means." I think that was really helpful.
But we'll do that again.
You can, and you'll send them out, follow them to all of us?
Yes. Just in case.
Everybody sign it. And then, the other thing is, I don't know if we can do this, or if we should look at, I know sometimes, after the moderator reads a certain article, he'll say, "Do any committees support this or anything?" Do we want to, when he gets to, for instance, the senior center, do we want to say the board of selectmen voted to?
That's a very good point.
Support it, because we, we've never done it, but sometimes we say that, or should we?
Specifically to that article, at the FISP meeting, you've been talking about getting votes of support from the other boards and committees.
So we could, we could do that if there's a motion for that, we can say that...
Make a motion that the board of selectmen support the senior center, honestly.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any other articles that, I mean, that we...
That's a good point.
We may want to, because I know, we've talked about, I mean, obviously, we're supporting... I know that the moderator usually asks after it's read, "Any committees, you know, what does the finance committee say, and what is the..."
Let me give some thought on that and send out an email to all of you.
On anything else?
And then if there's something that you feel you would like to vote on, we can do it at the May 3rd meeting.
That's fine, if there's none, that's fine.
Add that to the agenda.
Good. Okay, next item is approve town meeting mailer, because everybody, I think, it looks, I looked at it, it looks nice, and it prints nice, I think it's going to... Back is new.
I'll make a motion to approve the mailer.
Second.
Do we put that town logo?
The ceiling?
Yeah.
Put a town logo here.
Town logo and the color print?
Maybe up here, if there's room for it, if you think.
We could put it in. I, I'd rather not do color, because it's going to be very expensive.
No, don't do color, I do, can you do it in white? I would say do it in black and white.
Okay.
And then maybe if we put our slogan underneath it, if you can put it without a problem.
You want the logo in black and white, in small town?
Yeah, if you can, I think you might be able to put it on the front page, without much...
How many mailer records, everyone?
Everybody in town?
3,000, every resident.
Yeah, color will be killer.
I'm just looking up this.
I'm seeing titles.
Okay, I have a motion, and I believe I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the next is vote, ballot question for senior center. So this would be question one, which would be the only question on the ballot.
Correct. And this version includes the term "construction" in the question, as does the warrant article number four, and the reason for adding this in at the recommendation of our bond advisor was to allow the funds that are going to be borrowed for that pre-construction phase, if there are any funds left over, by having construction, construction use be in it, that would allow us to use any remaining funds toward construction rather than having to turn it back and then reborrow additional money.
Making motion to approve... Making a motion to approve ballot question one?
Second.
Okay, should I, should we read it out or?
I can read it out if you'd like.
That's fine.
Question one, shall the town of West Boylston be allowed to exempt from provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds or notes issued in order to cover the cost of full engineering and design of a new senior center facility through project bidding and construction, as well as owner's project management costs, including all project costs incidental or related thereto? Yes or no?
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And then next, we just, we'll just give an update on the informational meetings for the senior center. We have two, four, five still, still open to come to, we have on April twenty-ninth, Saturday, at ten-thirty.
No, wait.
You have one tomorrow?
Yep. We do have tomorrow.
We have six left, we have six left.
Yeah, but why, twenty, oh, twenty-seven? Yeah, tomorrow.
Oh, so we took that to be. April twenty-seventh, Thursday at three PM, Hillside Village Clubhouse, one fifty-five Hillside Village Drive. April twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, Saturday at ten-thirty AM, Christ Lutheran Church, one twelve Crescent Street. May first, two thousand seventeen, Monday, three PM, Orchard Knoll's, Knoll eighty-seven Maple Street. May second, two thousand seventeen, Tuesday at three PM, Angel Brook Clubhouse, one thirty, Angel Brook Drive. May fourth, two thousand seventeen, Thursday at six PM, Beaman Public Library, Eight Newton Street. And May sixth, two thousand seventeen, Saturday at ten AM, right here in this room, the town hall on one forty Worcester Street. And then the town meeting will be on May fifteenth, that's at seven PM, at the high school, middle high school. Now, we, yeah, this is, this, these are the meetings, we weren't thinking of having one at the, at our.
FISP meeting.
FISP meeting, we're going to do the whole presentation on now.
FISP meeting, I think we should do the whole presentation, so if anybody else misses anything, they can always come in and see that, so if anybody else wants to attend, like, we had some conversation about late night meetings, be a perfect opportunity for someone to come see it.
Or if they're not able to attend, it will be televised so that it will be available to be viewed on, on demand viewing.
Right, and anytime, if any residents have any questions in regards to the project, they can contact any of us, obviously, or the town administrator, and we'll try to get your answers for you.
And, and also the PowerPoint slides, all are in the town websites.
They should be loaded up tomorrow.
Yeah, the presentation. Okay, we still got fifteen minutes.
So the FISP meeting is May tenth, FISP meeting is May tenth, at seven PM.
Tenth at seven PM, right here in this room, so we'll, we'll have the presentation that night also. I guess we'll, we'll set up to have the presentation that night, if we find no one in the room that wants to see it again, we don't have to run.
Well, we'll still, we'll still go through the process just so that it's on the video and available to be viewed on the website.
Have an idea of the one for town meeting, right, because the next station, one for town meeting.
Are you doing it on the TV, the public access TV?
On the May tenth, or before that.
No, on the public access TV, you know, you go into your, right? One-on-one interview.
Is there going to be any, have you set anything up for public?
We're going to set anything up for that.
Okay, so maybe we'll look into that before the town meeting and before the vote.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion in a second, any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.